I got used to do that too.
Yeah. 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 Okay. Thank you. I still love you. Yeah. 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 I see a attorney there online. Who want to? You sign them with.
I can hear you.
He's listening to my every word. Is this all the staff that we will have? We're not... No engineers?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I see Brad.
They need magic.
There he is. Oh. Why didn't that work? Okay.
Hey, we are.
All right. Okay, we'll call the meeting of the regular town council of April 13th to order at 7:00 P.M. Let's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Okay, did you want to go through the public comment procedure or?
Yeah, I can go ahead and do that. So, because the meeting is being streamed through Zoom, that's our public participation platform for tonight's meeting. So, it's a webinar. If you're on Zoom and you want to provide public comment, you'll want to hit the Raise My Hand button down at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching on YouTube, we're not doing comments through YouTube, so you'll need to comment through Zoom. If you're calling in on the phone, you can still participate, and the way you do that is by hitting star nine to raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, we'll acknowledge, Mary Beth will acknowledge. You turn your mic on so you can speak, and you'll need to unmute yourself during public comment through your computer or your smartphone or whatever you're using.
Okay. Matters of interest to council members. Anyone know? Seeing none? Town manager report? Get away, Sean.
Uh, thank you. So, on your desk there, you have my report, kind of some significant stuff going on. So, I wanted to run through the COVID-19 stuff first. As you know, I think most of you know, the governor recently announced that the state would fully reopen our economy on June 15th. That assumes that vaccine supply remains sufficient and hospitalizations are stable and low. Criteria for stable and low, I haven't seen that yet, so I guess that'll be coming sometime soon. So, what that means is that all business sectors will be able to reopen with masking and social distancing still required. At this point, the county remains in the red tier, which is the substantial risk tier of the state's blueprint for a safer economy. And so, what that means is that some business sectors are able to open for indoor patrons with restrictions. You can find those, I put the website addresses. State and county continue to provide vaccinations as quickly as possible. Vaccine supply has increased. I heard recently that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine's been halted because of some sort of a blood clotting thing, but then I also heard that that won't necessarily impact the overall supply to the point where it's going to create like massive shortages. So, I guess it'll be kind of, we'll wait and see how that works. But vaccines are available now for anyone 16 and older in Placer County. So, you can go to the Placer County website. It's plaster.ca.gov/coronavirus or the state site above that I talked about, that I mentioned earlier, to set up an appointment. You can also get appointments at Safeway's, CBS appointments, Walmart is doing them. Basically, most pharmacies are doing appointments too, and you just need to kind of navigate through that. We're looking to reopen Town Hall Monday through Thursday from 9, excuse me, from 8:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. in May. So, still stay closed on Friday, but be open four days a week, full days, starting in May. All of our Town Hall, excuse me, all of our Town Hall staff who want to be vaccinated have, will have been at least two weeks past their second vaccination by May 3rd. So, all the staff will be ready to go for that. Library is reopened to the public on a minimal basis. Those current hours are Wednesdays from 1:00 P.M. to 5:00 P.M., Friday from 1:00 to 5:00, and Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And then we'll be looking at those hours also, probably in May or maybe June when things actually open up. And then always have the proviso at the bottom about wearing a face covering, do the social distancing, wash your hands. I'll also note that we're hoping that we'll be able to start having live in-public meetings with members of the public attending the meetings. Start holding those at the Blue Goose in June. There's some logistics stuff I've got to work out with Ken, with her audiovisual guy that folks can't see except for us. But make sure that the issues over at the Blue Goose on the audio side have been hammered out, according to Ken they have been. So, we're going to do a kind of test run in mid-May, just Ken and I, to see how well that works and make sure that we don't have that weird feedback stuff that we had going before. I've already talked to Randy Elder, who's the chairman or the president of the South Placer Heritage Foundation that runs the shed, and he said that we can have meetings there. You know, we just need to kind of coordinate and make sure stuff's okay. So, that's good news. We'll still be running, we'll still have Zoom going at the same time. I think that from this point forward, we'll end up having kind of those hybrid meetings where we have folks from the public. If they want to participate, they can do that through Zoom. I don't think that'll be going away, and then obviously we'll still be streaming to YouTube as well. So, good news. Trying to open up all the communication channels and public participation as we know. On Costco, I just wanted to give just a quick kind of outline of where we're at with all that stuff. So, town recently settled one of the lawsuits out of the three. So, we settled the Brace Taylor LLC lawsuit. The town is preparing to defend the other two lawsuits with the City of Rockland and Citizens for Responsible Growth, which is the Rockland Arco Gas Station owner, in court. We're looking at August 27th for a potential hearing date. That date's been scheduled, and on the court's calendar, it doesn't mean it's going to stay there. It might end up getting pushed depending on how things go with the court. So, but at least we have a date at this point. And then I wanted to point out that there was a recent story in the Loomis News that included a comment from a City of Rockland spokesperson where he kind of insinuated that the town hasn't adequately addressed traffic impacts and questioned why the project only had one entrance. And so, I posted a comment on that story, and I wanted to reiterate it here for folks who are listening through Zoom to make sure that people and on YouTube, to make sure that people understand that they're wrong, basically. So, I'm going to read that really quickly, sort of quickly. So, town's been very disciplined in its response to these kind of stories in the past. However, we can't let flat-out falsehoods continue to be perpetuated. Perhaps Mr. Young, who is the spokesperson, hasn't reviewed the project's conditions of approval. I listed the website address for the town website where those conditions of approval are. And to summarize, because that's a very lengthy document, obviously, if Rockland wants a second access point for Costco, they should allow Costco to connect to Granite Drive. That connection point was put into the conditions of approval for the project if Rockland allows that connection. Costco already has the adjacent property owner's approval. There's already an access agreement between Costco and the adjacent property owner. And so, at this point, if Rockland wants the second entrance, then they should allow the second entrance to go through. You can find the conditions of approval on page 19, and I'll read what that says. It says, "As part of the improvements, if access between the Costco property and Granite Drive is sought by the City of Rockland and the adjacent landowner, Costco shall provide a connection point for said access at a location approved by both Costco and the town of Loomis." Spokesperson's assertions that the town isn't mitigating traffic impacts is also incorrect. Those impacts are addressed in the EIR and also in the conditions of approval. Condition number 76, which is on page 185, says, "The applicant shall contribute their fair share towards regional transportation improvements and shall provide traffic mitigation contributions to Caltrans, City of Rockland, and Placer County pursuant to the terms of the town's agreements with those entities." Town has gone above and beyond to resolve these issues with our neighbor to the west. You can get a flavor of how long we worked to resolve these issues on page 191 of that staff report, which is a timeline of agency coordination efforts. You note that communication with Rockland stopped in October of 2019 after the town submitted a draft agreement intended to fill their concerns, and we haven't received any kind of a response on that draft agreement yet. The town has yet to receive a response. There's a mechanism to address Rockland's concerns about one access point. Unfortunately, they have chosen not to engage the town in further discussions to complete an agreement on that mechanism. And as an aside, as I've noticed in the past, town looks forward to vigorously defending the project in court if that is necessary. A couple of other things, kind of the main one, the other thing I want to talk about is the Hidden Grove Project. You know, we received a pre-application for that project for the property located behind Rayleigh's. That pre-application is for a housing project to be processed under California's new housing law, SB 330. There's a link to the pre-application, it's on the website, so you can go in and actually see what that pre-application is and what they're intending to submit. We, staff has reviewed the pre-application, and we've sent it back to the potential developer for additional refinement. That SB 330 is pretty, you know, new legislation. It actually took effect last year in 2020, but it significantly alters the process for reviewing residential mixed-use development projects. And so, the Hidden Grove Project will be the first project that the town processes under that new legislation. And so, what we did is on staff, and what I asked our town attorney to do is to put together kind of a an analysis of what SB 330 is and how it impacts the town. That's also on the town website for folks if they want to look through that. Those are all under the Planning Department page of the website under Current Projects. Hidden Grove is underneath that. And then the last thing, Town Manager Tuesdays, that's coming up again, fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 A.M. This month, meeting, and hopefully that we'll be able to hold it outside the train depot here, assuming that the weather allows that. And on Friday before, I'll post the meeting information to the website and then to the Facebook page, so folks know where to go for that. I really encourage people to come to that. The last one, I only had two people, and while the conversation was good between the two people, it would've been better to have more folks participating, for sure. So, that's it. I can answer questions if you have them or from council, and then we'll want to open it up to the public as well.
Does council have any questions?
I do, I have one. On August 27th, when that arrives, can you give us a brief synopsis of, you know, who will be in attendance at the courthouse?
It'd be me, Andy will likely be there, Anders Howie, our planning, staff augmentation planner, and then also Sabrina, who is our sequel attorney. It's not like a court hearing where you have witnesses be called. It's, most of it's done by briefings. There is a hearing where we have to show up and we have to talk about, you know, answer questions basically from the judge, but it's not like Perry Mason courtroom drama stuff. It's actually frankly quite dry, so. But from our side, that's who I anticipate will be there.
Okay, and then afterwards, you'll, what happens in terms of?
I'll do a closed session, update on litigation with council to make sure that you all know what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay.
You want to open it up for public comment?
Yeah. Should we just open it up for what you were discussing or?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so the public comment would only be for the town manager report, any questions from the public on that? So, if you're watching and you have a question, you'll want to hit that Raise My Hand or Raise Hand button at the bottom of the screen to let Mary Beth know that you have a comment.
Do we have a comment, do we do the Loomis Chamber update?
Well, he's opening up just for the town manager.
Okay.
Pam Blake, you may unmute and proceed.
Thank you. I don't have a comment on the town manager report, but before the, we could see the actual video. I could hear all you guys talking, so I don't know if you knew that your, your mic was on and whoever was on early could hear you guys all talking or not, but I could hear you all talking. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
All right, thanks Pam.
Thank you Pam.
No others?
No others.
Okay, we'll open it up for the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Is Ryan?
I do not have Ryan on the line.
Okay.
Okay. So, seeing no Loomis Chamber of Commerce update, we'll open up for public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. The council may refer your concerns raised during public comment to staff or placed on future agenda. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comments on any item on the agenda at the time it is heard.
So, any members of the public wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Miguel, you may proceed. Unmute and proceed.
That's okay. Actually, yeah, I wanted to talk about, changed my mind, so thank you.
All right, thanks Miguel. Is there?
No others.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, we need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? We'll call.
Councilmember Cartwright? Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Okay. So, now we have the opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or council member requests otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Does anyone have any comments? Any from the public?
Public attendees, this is your opportunity to raise your hand if you'd like to speak on the consent calendar. Seeing none?
Okay, we have none, so I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
And Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Okay, so now we're at the business, so we have a general plan status update, and Anders will be presenting.
Good evening. Mary Beth, I guess you're running the power, right?
I am.
All right.
I'd like to see how to get rid of the top room.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're going to give a brief update on the general plan status. You have a status report in your packet, which I'm summarizing here, and then also, we're going to talk about the housing element and its status and the consequences if you don't meet the deadline, so that will be part of this report. Mary Beth? As always, we want to start out with the vision, the mission statement for the town of Loomis. At this moment in time, we don't have any recommendations for changing, so we are still following this as we review the general plan and as each committee looks at recommendations. So, this continues to be the guidance for this general plan update. Next. And your direction hasn't changed. We're still focusing on the land use, and we're making necessary modifications. So, if you notice on the town's website, a number of updates have been posted to that website in the last couple of days. All the settings sections are now up for your review, and we, let's see, I think we just put up a brand-new table of contents with five pages of all the participants. So, it's a lengthy table of contents on the general plan, but it does give recognition to the council, Planning Commission, and all the committee members participating. Next. What has happened? You received the status report at your last meeting, March 9th. Planning Commission, we conducted a training session on planning and the role of the Planning Commissioner on the 23rd of March. Town website, we continue to update and refine based on comments at your strategic meeting. The front page of the town's website now has a general plan link to take you directly into the general plan update. So far, there have been 475 visits to the general plan site. We've received one comment in March regarding the housing element. And let me talk about, we have a number of comments that have been received since 2019, and we are in the process of listing every single comment, and every single comment is going to have a response. We're still engaged in that process as soon as it's ready. It is going to be released to you, Planning Commission, and all the committees, so that you can see exactly how a comment is being addressed in this document. And our intent is then, on a monthly basis, update that comment list as we move forward. So, you, the Planning Commission, and the committee members are all aware of the comments that have come in. So far, on that comment list, I think we're approaching 500 comments that we're responding to, so it's taking a little bit of time to assemble that information. There was a housing survey conducted as part of the housing element update. We received 208 comments on, or 208 participants, and that information has been posted on the website to see the responses or the comments that we received. There had been no comments regarding a town survey at this point in time. Town Facebook indicates 728 have been reached, 63 are engaged. There have been four shares, two likes, and one angry face. Yes.
Mayor Duncan, may I ask a question, please? So, when you say receive no comment letters regarding a town survey, what is it thus, what survey, I'm, are you talking about?
It's a survey, that dealt with looking at creating a survey and getting comments on the kinds of questions that could be asked. So, that has been something that has been asked in this process. At this point in time, we don't have that, but one of the other things we're about ready to do is launch the program called
Social Penpoint.
Social Penpoint, which also has an opportunity for us to ask questions and conduct surveys with that. And the, the whole website allows somebody to go in and say on the land use element, take a little icon and pin it to a map of Loomis and say, "I have a concern about this," or "I recommend this." So, that, we reviewed it, I looked at it today, and it's about ready to go public, so we'll let you know when that goes public. ready to go public, so we'll let you know when that goes public.
So I thought maybe the bullet point was referring to the housing survey because of all the, you said the, the post indicated 728 reached?
Correct.
So maybe that's?
For Facebook, that was Facebook.
That was Facebook's housing survey post.
Okay, so, so maybe what it, when you say receive no comment letters regarding the housing, it's probably the housing survey, okay.
And Mary Beth, I think you added that comment, so I'm assuming that that's probably true, okay. You are correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And we did receive six comment letters regarding land use and we can, that was in March, and I know in April we have received a number of letters regarding all of the elements of the general plan update. Whoa. So we'll, okay. Agency outreach, we had been working with PCWA and provided them mapping of the town. One of the other things that we began early April was to coordinate all the GIS, Geographic Information Systems, under the town's umbrella. We were having some issues with various team members having different data points, so it is now under the town of Loomis and that GIS mapping currently is being updated. We just downloaded a fair amount of information from the county. We have, I think today we're done updating the vacant land map, I think we now have it correct finally, and that should be released, Mary Beth, probably in the next couple of days.
Yeah, by the end of the week.
Yeah, by the end of the week, that, that graphic will be released. So we're making progress on GIS and getting consistency on all the information, and I think that's going to be helpful for all of us, and especially with the various public agencies to give them the information. They need to help us in looking forward for services that we need as the general plan is built out. And then, the committees have been meeting in March, and as you know, that's a fair number of meetings. I believe all the committees have now met once except the Environmental Justice Committee, which is next week, and then next week, and actually this week, we begin the second round of meetings with all of the committees. So one of the things that we did do is we're postponing the Facilities, Public Services and Facilities Committee. We had so many requests for information that it's going to take a while for us to assemble that. I think I mentioned, and I'll mention again, that basically the staff has two weeks to turn around everything in order to meet the deadlines to get agendas out, whatever, and two weeks is just not enough to assemble that and get it out for the committee to review. So that meeting is going to be postponed until May when the committee has all the information. Next slide.
The other thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
That our Public Services, Facilities, and Finance Committee, that was its original heading, we are now moving finance into economic development because it doesn't play well with public, you know, we don't do any public services and stuff, so that the Committee of Public Services, Facilities, and Finance will now just focus on public services and facilities.
Yeah, we think it makes sense, and I, we're going to approach the committees about actually having a standalone economic and finance element, rather than right now it's buried within the land use element, it really does get kind of buried, and as you know, the finances are critical, economic development is critical to the finances of the town, as I think Roger will be discussing later this evening. So we feel it really, we're going to recommend that it becomes a standalone element that can focus on the, the future of the town and, and your finances. This is the chart that you've seen before, it just shows all the committee meetings on a monthly basis. I know most of us Thursday night after all the meetings are wiped out and ready for Friday. It's kind of amazing, there's a lot of stuff going on at the meetings, you know, I think the committee members are starting to get into the idea that this is a general plan, we're at the 10, 30,000 foot level, and have policy discussions, and we're looking forward to that, but it gets your brain going as you have those discussions and hear the recommendations. So I think the committees are going to be a lot more fun as we move forward and probably just as tiring. Next. And for April, this is just a calendar, your report has a calendar for April and May, this is just showing in April the various meetings that are being held this month for the committees. Next. And this is the overall schedule, we're on course, and as we get into the housing element, I'll focus on that schedule in a bit. Part of that schedule is the local, local, okay.
Local go back.
Yeah, go back, I'm sorry. The, the Saicog Rural Main Street Program. So today we had a conference call with LGC, the Local Government Committee, Commission, and they are going to be making a presentation to the Economic and Development Committee.
On the 22nd?
Okay, on the 22nd of April. So we'll be noticing everyone that that is being done, it's a workshop, and they're going actually have breakout sessions as we go through that session, and it kind of wraps up all of the programs put on by Saicog, so this will be the wrap-up of that.
And that kind of Michelle presentation that was done through Saicog, the LGC component will kind of tie into that too, but be independent.
And then also the Robert Liberty Report on housing, which was a report that has been published. So those are the three components of that Saicog, so we're almost wrapping up.
What was that date again?
April?
22nd.
April 22nd.
It's next Thursday, 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thursday, the regular meeting.
Yeah.
It's the regular meeting of the committee, the one thing, it will not be shown on YouTube because Saicog is actually running the Zoom meeting, because in this meeting they have breakout groups and it is a complex, we, Robert Tadevich is going to be running that for us, where you actually pull people out, you have a separate group, talk about it, then come back and share your conclusions with the whole group. So as soon as that's done, Mary Beth will be given the link, and then we will post that meeting on the town's website, the link to that, but it will not be live just because of the logistics of doing a live meeting with breakout groups, so just so you're aware. All right. Next steps, we will continue to be posting the updates to the general plan. One of the updates, if it's coming, we released a portion of it, but it is the reference section, so for every section of the general plan, the references that we're using are listed, so we're partially done, we had a request from someone to see part of that list, so we have shared that, but the whole list will be posted so that people can go in and see the references we're using and assembling this general plan. During the month of April, we'll be preparing your next status report, we'll continue to have the meetings, we will have the Rural Main Street Workshop Program next on the We will also be publishing the comment with response document in the month of April, so that's coming up soon. Also, the social pinpoint site should go live hopefully the end of this week or early next week, so you can start entering your comments. And then, as Mary Beth noted, we're taking finance and putting down with the economic development, we felt that that just was a better parent than where it was. Excellent. Okay, housing element, and what I want to talk about, the schedule and the consequences of not meeting the schedule. So the state of California requires that we adopt a housing element, and the deadline is May 15th of this year. So after May 15th, the town will be out of compliance. However, the state has given 120-day grace period to adopt the housing element, and that takes us to September 10th of this year, and if we don't have it adopted by that time, there are consequences. So this housing element, the period runs from June 30th, 2021, through August 31st, 2029, so it's an eight-year period. And the other thing that we have done in conjunction with this is we have tiered from the Placer County Housing, Housing Element Update, which we were able to use all the information generated by Placer County for our housing element, which reduced the timeframe for you to prepare your element and reduced the cost for you to prepare your element because that was already done with Placer County, so that is an advantage of keeping on this eight-year schedule. Next. So if you take a look at the close-up of the schedule, the black area arrow shows where we are, which is next week, the, no, this week, the Housing Committee is meeting, and the intent is to make final recommendations to the Planning Commission. We'll be taking the housing element to the Planning Commission, they will make a recommendation to the council. The council recommendation is to send it off to Housing Community Development for their 60-day review, so they have 60 days to review it, make recommendations to changes to meet the state standards in the housing element. Then it comes back to the town, there'll be an addendum on the draft EIR, so that we have the environmental clearance, and one status completed goes back to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, to the council for adoption, and then to the town council for actual adoption of the housing element. Our schedule is to get us right around that September timeframe, and if you take a look at the red lines there, the deadline for adoption is May 15th, the grace period is due September 10th. So the schedule we're on right now, without any glitches, is really close to meeting that deadline. Excellent. So the state law gives California Department of Housing Community the authority to review the housing elements, and once they review it, then they will issue a letter saying, you're in compliance, and that is referred to as a certification of the housing element, and that's what you're looking for. There will be a recommendation after their 60-day review, and then after adoption, there will be a certification. Excellent. So the general plan, as you know, guides everything for the town of Loomis, and if you're not in compliance with state law and the general plan, then if the town were challenged in court regarding the viability of the general plan, and you don't have your certification, there then becomes a question if your general plan is consistent and in compliance with the state law, and that has potential consequences for future actions of the town. Next. State law provides that a jurisdiction does not demonstrate availability of adequate sites to accommodate its regional housing needs, the RENA allocation, the shortfall is carried over and added to the following year. So if you don't have enough sites by the end of this housing element period, that will be carried over and you're going to have to take not only the new allocation, but the existing remaining allocation for compliance, so it's cumulative over time. If the jurisdiction does not adopt the housing element, and in this case, September 10th of this year, subsequent updates must be completed on a four-year schedule. So the Placer County Planning Commission just recommended adoption of the housing element to the board. Board is taking it up on May 11th, so they're barely going to meet the May 15th deadline, but they'll be on an eight-year schedule based on that. So the consequence is you would be taking on the housing element by yourself in a four-year period rather than eight-year period, so just kind of messy and, and not cheap.
One, one question, Anders?
Yes.
You said earlier the Housing Element Committee is scheduled for next week?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Isn't it tomorrow or is it next week?
The 20th.
I'm sorry, it's the 20th.
Okay.
So they're scheduled for the 20th, and then the Planning Commission meets the eve?
27th.
On the 22nd, so they will be considering the recommendation of the Housing Element Committee, and then it goes on to the council for you to basically recommend it for HCD review.
And that would be on May 13th.
Right.
Yes.
It was originally scheduled for tomorrow.
Right, and we were delayed, yes.
So I just wonder if the HCD knows of the urgency, and I mean, you, you can tell them we need to have that 60 days back, and they won't hold it up for some reason or?
Yeah, they are aware of it, but every single city and county in the state of California is doing the same thing, so they, they keep, they keep telling us, you know, we have our 60 days, we'll let you know and we'll try and get it done faster, but yes, they are aware that we want to get this done so we can get it adopted.
Because it's so close.
It is that close. So one of, one of the consequences is some of the state funding is contingent upon the town having a certified housing element, and if the funding is not tied to the housing element, then at times they will use that as a criteria, those who have certified elements have a higher priority in getting funding than towns without the housing element, so there's potential consequences to the town of Loomis for future funding from the state of California. Also, as you're required, this just points out that the state of California did sue Huntington Beach, and they settled the lawsuits, so the state at times will take up and sue jurisdictions over compliance with the housing element. So it's something that also has consequences just being in court and having that question.
Anders, I have a couple of questions. So the, the draft EIR addendum comes with the HCD review or?
We will start assembling that with the HCD review, but once the HCD reviews out, then that draft is ready to go forward, because HCD will make changes to the housing element, they'll make recommendations that are going to have to be addressed in the environmental documentation, so we'll be preparing the documentation, HCD comes out with their recommendations, we update the documentation and then release it.
And can't we do special meetings to speed things up?
We can.
So we could do a special meeting for the Planning Commission and then a special meeting for us?
We can do that, yes.
So that's good.
That is, agree. All right. So phase two of the Housing Committee, because, you know, some are wanting to continue meeting. We're probably going to halt the meetings of the Housing Committee for a while, but their role then is, as we move into the, the remainder of the general plan, is to review the other elements, make recommendations on sites for RENA housing, make recommendations on goals, policies, objectives. So we'll be reconvening the Housing Element Committee shortly after this process, but this process is concluded, that goes off, gets reviewed by HCD, comes back and approved, and so as soon as we start getting some feedback from the other committees that the Housing Committee can review, then we'll have them do that. So the intent is, there's more work for the Housing Element Committee, but they're going to have a little break as we continue forward with the rest of the general plan, and then come back and be participants with all the other committees. So part of the Housing Element Update requires a jurisdiction to identify sufficient amount of land, so for our 2021 through 29 cycle, it's an overall allocation of 352 units, 180 of, 80 of those are in the lower and very low income category, just, I think you've seen those RENA numbers before, and that's what we're having to accomplish. So the RENA criteria, it's important that right now, I think the housing element tells us we have enough land designated to meet the RENA. If that land is developed with other uses, then we have to go find more RENA, and right now, that land designated for the RENA compliance, for especially the low and very low, is in the property formerly known as The Villages, currently known as Hidden Grove. So it kind of depends on what happens with that application and where we go forward. So one of the things we have to do as part of this general plan update is look for other locations within the town that can accommodate the RENA requirements, and we want enough that you're not in a position, if a project gets built, you're required to have no net loss in housing, so that means you're immediately, if something gets built, you approve it, we're having to go and look at identification of additional land. So I think as part of this general plan update for the Land Use Committee, the Housing Committee is to make sure we have adequate sites to meet our allocation, so that if something happens, you know, we're not scrambling to go backfill and, and comply with that no net loss of housing. A sufficient site is one that is vacant or maybe underutilized, looking at the vacant land survey, there's some parcels out there with an old barn or an old shed or something like that, so that is an underutilized site that might be available for housing. And also, it needs to have the appropriate zoning, you know, for those uses, and I believe the next slide may talk about it, so if you could, it doesn't. But basically, in, the state is looking for a minimum of zoning. But basically, the state is looking for a minimum of zoning general plan land use designation that allows 20 units per acre to meet these RENA guidelines. And if you can't demonstrate that you have adequate sites, then the jurisdiction must, must, shall rezone vacant or unutilized site to accommodate the RENA. So again, no net loss of RENA lands in the town. So we have to look for those. Also, to satisfy the lower income allocation, jurisdictions may need to increase the density for the identified sites to match the default density. And there was some discussion, I believe, at the Housing Committee about, you know, what would it look like for 20 units per acre, 30 units per acre? How could that be accommodated? If you don't have enough land, the choice then is you go basically up to have the adequate land. So that's something that both the Land Use Committee and Housing Committee need to evaluate as we move forward. Also, a certain portion of the units has to be capable of being developed as very low or low-income units. Density is an important factor, so definitely in the Land Use and Housing Committee, we'll be further talking about density and where that occurs. Again, here's where 20 units per acre is the default density for the state of California. Under state law, they can parcel all of the zoned and the general plan designated to allow multifamily housing is considered a suitable low-income housing site. So that's automatic by the state. And the sites that are zoned and general plan designated to allow for the lower density or higher, post-minimum 20 units per acre, they don't have to be built. So the town is not obligated to build the housing. You just have to make sure the sites are available. And then, as you note, with the application for Hidden Grove, which is under SB 330, pretty much, you come in and the applicant can build as long as they're in compliance with the general plan. So it's one of the things the state is saying. If you have the land designated and zoned, then the applicant can come in and build it. So they're trying to reduce the restrictions and limitations on building this housing in the state of California. Next slide. And also, the state law allows jurisdictions to take credit for secondary units, previously known as granny flats, now accessory dwelling units is the title that is being used. And it's based on the number of units being developed during the prior planning period. So I know the town has allowed ADUs. And I was just at a meeting where I saw there is a project being developed in Granite Bay where all of the 48 units being developed has an ADU attached to it in order to meet some of those requirements for Placer County. So it's kind of interesting that they're already designed with the ADUs attached. So it's the first time I've seen that come through. Next. So that is the update, you know, and the consequences of not adopting by September 10th. Any comments? GPupdate@loomis.ca.gov is where comments are coming in. And definitely, these will be discussions on the housing element portions with the Housing Committee and with the Land Use Committee as we move forward.
Okay. Any questions from Council?
Just one. So what you're saying is our Town Council hearing, if it's on September 10th, is the last day that we would be able to do that without having some ramifications?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a drop-dead date.
Mm-hmm. I just have a statement just for anybody watching on YouTube is that all of these meetings are being recorded on our YouTube channel. And so if you're interested in, you know, participating or seeing what people are saying, to go to the Town of Loomis YouTube.
Thank you for that, that. And they're all available up there. And one of the things I learned is if you have a YouTube account, is subscribe to the Town of Loomis, and it will pop up as soon as one of those meetings is available so you don't miss out on when the meetings occur. So I've been finding that helpful, even though I'm attending the meetings. It's nice to see immediately after the notification comes, there's a meeting available for you to view.
To Jan's point, I think everyone on Council and the Planning Commission would be willing to meet early, maybe often, before we even have a drop-dead date of September 10th. I'd hate to have our final meeting on the drop-dead date.
We will look at that calendar and work with you on that.
Great. Thanks, Anders.
Thank you.
And public comment?
Members of the public attending the meeting, you may raise your hand. Seeing none, we will move on.
I saw Miguel. I saw Miguel.
Miguel, go ahead, unmute.
Okay, thank you. There seems to be a conflict between the general plan, one of the policy statements, basically for slow growth, and as an example, the Grove, that's 1,000 people, which would be 17% increase in our population. So either, so how are those two ideas going to be together where you have, one of the goals of the general plan is for slow growth, yet we're not going to have slow growth, apparently?
Effect approved doesn't mean it builds out all at once. It could build out over time. The other thing, looking at the policies and implementation measures in the general plan, I don't see anything that prohibits somebody who has a subdivision from selling the lots and building out the subdivision. So having a subdivision with approved residential units versus how quickly it builds out are two different subjects. And it's something if you review a project, you may want to consider for consistency with the general plan.
All right. Thanks, Miguel. Is there any other public comment?
No, sir.
Thanks, Anders.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So now we have, the next business item is preliminary budget for 2021 and 2022.
Now I'm live. I'm live from Memorex. Here we go. Okay, now I'm really ready to do my report as soon as I can bring up my visual. But to do that, I have to get back to the screen from the computer. So I don't know. Don't know how to do that. I can point things. Okay. Now you can stick everybody over on the right side. And then I'm going to blow up my screen so you can actually maybe see some of these tiny little numbers I have up there. But just before that gets up, I might as well preface it. So this is the first view of the budget. It's mostly looking at revenues, and we're speaking specifically general fund, operating funds that are day-to-day. We have plenty of other funds for special uses that aren't being, that won't be shown in this budget, in this part of the budget. They'll be in the final presentation. Have to wait for Mary to stop using the mouse, then. There we go. Oh, we're getting close. Just tell me when I can take control.
Oh, you can.
Okay, thanks. Because if you keep touching the mouse, then it'll keep messing. Okay. So this may, I don't have a, if I have a mouse, yeah, I think it might be my lack of mouse pad, but.
Can you use it?
Sure. Okay, better, much better. Okay, let's do this video. Okay, so we're looking at the general fund, the operating funds for the day-to-day operations. Down here at the bottom of this first page, you'll see that right now, I'm going to see if I get my highlighter going. We're looking at an excess of revenue over expenditures of just over $17,000, which is incredibly unusual at this point. I usually at this, usually I'm showing $500,000 in the hole so that in June, I can look like a superhero and have everything figured out. But right now, because COVID has been interesting, it's like I'm going with the total conservative. This has given us a good impression of where things are going. I'm going down here to revenues. Let's see if I can make this a little bit bigger. There we go. Okay. Property taxes. Prop 13 allows the county assessor to increase the value of properties up to 2% a year based on inflation. You'll see that we're projecting an increase of over 5%. And that's because when a house sells, it's revalued. And because of the hot real estate market, it's just been climbing. And we have never.
Prop 13 allows the county assessor to increase the value of properties.
So anyway, I hear myself, I can hear my own thoughts. So we have never, except way back in 2008 to 2010, had actually seen the 2%. We've always, Loomis has always been a good market where this has always increased. So I'm very comfortable in saying we'll have a 5% increase in property taxes. Sales taxes, on the other hand, are the concern. You'll see, I'm projecting a decrease of $200,000. That's because we lost our biggest sales tax producer, and we can't guarantee that another big one is starting in the coming year. I won't project that until the doors open and they're pushing big boxes out the doors. In that case, at that point, we might want to readdress it or else just, I like to think of the budget as a yardstick. You know, it's not a Bible. Doesn't, you don't have to go buy it. You just have to use it as a reason to explain differences. So I don't generally make changes in the budget. So that would be something we'll look at. And that's, this decrease that I'm talking about affects both the sales tax and the quarter cent tax, transaction tax that we pass for the library. Now, that's the bad news. The could-be even worse news is one of the very large online retailers with procurement centers throughout California has asked the CDTFA, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, to reallocate how those tax dollars are given out. Right now, they go into the county pool, and they're shared with the town. They want it allocated to the cities where the procurement centers are. So that could decrease each of these lines by another $50,000. I'll have a better idea of that. I have a meeting with our tax, sales tax specialists at the end of the month. And so in our next meeting, maybe I'll have the town manager report it. If we don't have anything on the budget, let you know where we think that's going. Let's see. What else I want to talk about? Sales taxes. Okay, so franchise taxes, it's interesting. Cable franchise taxes have gone down. And the only, I haven't asked anybody why that is, but I think it's because of the things like Hulu, Netflix, all the web-based allocate, people are going away from cable. They're using the web base instead. And so we're losing franchise fees from that. It's not a significant thing, but when I see a change like that, we've got a drop from over $40,000 a year to an estimate of 30. So that was a significant drop to me. All the other franchises appear to be the same. Building is going, is booming. Building permits are booming. The revenue, unfortunately, what comes in goes out when it comes to building permit because all that money is dedicated to, it covers the cost. And as we discussed last Friday, it doesn't even necessarily cover the cost. And so we're looking at raising those, hopefully in the near future, to at least make sure our costs are covered. But those costs, revenues are staying high because the revenues, the projects keep going forward. As the economy opens even wider, I expect to see that increase even more once we can start doing in-house inspections. We've already taken in more single-family dwellings in the last month than I've seen in the last two years. So that's specifically the Taylor Road mixed-use, as they're building their model homes now. And once those could sell in months, we could be healthier though. So that could be, could be a big boon there. Let's see. Anything else on revenue? Investment income continues to go down as the market, the interest rate market stays low. The feds have said they don't expect to raise from the 0% to 25%, 2.25% till at least the end of next year, next calendar year. So I tend to buy long when we have money come available. I buy out at the five-year mark. Two years ago, I was buying negotiable CDs that were paying 3.5%. Now, I only look for double-A and triple-A rated investments, and they're paying between 0.8% and 1.1%. A month, two months ago, they were only paying a half a percent. So things are looking up. We're getting a percent. But at any rate, three years from now, when those are two-year investments, they'll probably still be above what the two-year is paying. So as interest rates rise, our ladder peels off and gets reinvested. So I don't expect it to drop a whole lot more. But we, I keep my eye on that every day, so we'll be doing fine with that. See. At the very bottom, you'll see this number here, $490,000, Dedicated General Fund Reserves. That's the money that we've set aside over previous years for the general plan update. So those revenues are offset specific costs in the Planning Department to a net zero effect for the budget. If those costs aren't spent during the fiscal year, they'll be rolled over in the budget to the subsequent year. Again, it'll be a net zero effect. Hopefully, we won't spend more than that on the general plan update. We'll hold some feet to the fire if we have to.
We've got lots of grants.
Lots of grants. And that's in excess of the grants, unfortunately. Okay. So as far as expenditures go, let's see, how much do I want to talk about this? Let's see if I can get down here. I have a new two pages in this budget that I didn't have before. I used to have one page that summarized each department with one line item, total budget. There's now two pages that show each department by personnel, supplies and services, and capital purchases. There's two reasons for this. It gives you a quick idea of what each department's spending, what it's spending on. If you want more detail, go back a few pages, you'll find it. It's also kind of a transparency idea for people that don't want to have to know that there's $100 going to travel, and instead, they can see what each department is costing. You'll also see that clearly that personnel is our major expense for every department. And as we talked about, let me get down here to Public Works. You can see out of their million-dollar budget for Public Works, $614,000 is going to personnel. We talked about properly using contracts versus personnel, and how there's a lot of things that we do ourselves, our Public Works guys are out there doing, that we really need to hire contracts. On the other hand, we could probably save money and efficiency by rehiring a town engineer and minimizing the contract with the engineer. So this budget actually assumes that both the engineer and the building inspector are made employees, full-time employees. If that happens, you know, we've been trying. This may go back to staying with contracts. If that's the case, it should be a net zero adjustment, and then we'll use the budget for payroll as the benchmark for the contracts we put out. The final question I have, I didn't want to go in a whole lot in the expenses because a lot of it's simple trend analysis. There's not a whole lot to change. This is what we spend, this is what we get. The payroll is based exactly on the projected hours that we have in a year, based times the number of employees, with a 5% pad that I build in in case there's a cost of living allowance for the year. Right now, the cost of living is running at about 1.5%. So there's a little bit of extra pad there in the budget for contingencies. That's always good to have. One question I would like to bring up, I had a voicemail on my phone this morning from Bethany Black, who's the head of the Loomis Dolphins, the swim team. And they've trained all of their lifeguards. the Loomis Dolphins, the swim team, and they've trained all of their lifeguards. They're all certified now. So she's hoping, wanting to know what we want to do for our swim program this year. Last year, there was no swim program because there was COVID. I left, called, called her back and left a message and asked, you know, what do you perceive the pool ability to be? You know, will we gonna, will we have swim ability? I'm guessing that she's thinking yes. So I want to know, I haven't, I have $2,000 budgeted for the swim program, which really is a month, you know. It usually runs the whole program for the year, usually runs $5,000 to $6,000. Before COVID struck, we'd actually planned to expand that to two days a week. What's the council's idea? What's the council's desire? We have, we have $17,000 to spend. So do you, do you want me to pursue? I, okay, let me give you my full disclosure. I hate dealing with the swim program. My my complete intention is to pass it off to to Sarah in our office. Let her run it. I think it's, it costs us more in time for for staff, but you know what? If there's really 75 to 100 people there every day, it's probably the same people all the time. We're spending that kind of money, but it's, if it's a positive thing for the town, it's the town's money, you know. It's the, it's the, it's the residents' taxes that are at work. So what do you think? This is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them, and let me know what you think about a pool party.
Okay, he's opening it up for questions.
I have a question. So I know we did a survey, we tried to survey the town about the pool, but I kind of don't think that worked very well. And since we're doing the new social, what is this new survey? Pinpoint. When will that be online?
Hopefully by the end of this week, first of next week.
So maybe we could use the pool question to be one of the first things that we run on that? I I'd really like to know what the community wants.
And the, we really should have, should have had this discussion in January. Because to get the pool all set up and everything, I mean, this is next month, May, you know, we we should probably discuss this on next month's agenda, at least the pool, because we need to arrange with the district and everything else. So yeah, I think if, I I'm not in control of that questionnaire. So if you want to get that on there, that'd be a great thing to, you know, will. I would be, I'd be curious to see how many people responded this time, because we really did not get a lot of feedback.
We didn't.
And I think it's, I don't know.
Well, and then the governor opening up officially as of June 15th.
We have a pool party that day.
I I think that the the social pinpoint thing, I don't know if that's the right place to do that either. When we did the survey last time, it only went through the newsletter and it got mailed out. And it was, I think there was a, it was a web based survey. No, it wasn't. It was fill it out. So we have the email system built now where we've got everybody's email addresses, like 2,000 of those. I think that we'd get a much better response if it was an online survey. I send it out through the website and then we, and then also put it on Facebook, have people respond through the internet instead of doing it through the newsletter. I don't think that social pinpoint thing is really the the right platform then for that. So we could easily do that. I mean, we could send that out in the next couple of, you know, next week or so. It wouldn't take very long to to build it, basically use the same same questions that we had last time and see what people say.
Maybe just when you create the survey, you know, make sure you say, obviously, if if the state is opening up, you know, precept by, because we want to have everybody saying we're not allowed to swim.
Right.
So.
Right.
Okay.
Well, you know how I feel about the swim program, because I volunteered my time for the swim program. But I would say that I've heard community people be concerned about us putting money towards the pool and not getting to use it. So I would like to see that survey too, and I think it it is a pain for staff. I I know, because, you know, but I think it's very, very important and giving, I just feel very, I think we should do the survey, and I would be for it. Being someone that swam in the pool when I was a kid.
So we have sent, Roger. So we we have $17,000 set aside in the budget.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is right now, we're net $17,000 revenue over expenditure. So there's some money to spend. But right now, we have $2,000 set aside.
$2,000 allocated for the.
Yeah, and that pretty much gets us through June, you know, and that's what I have from the last year's budget to get us through June, and $2,000 for next year, which would get us into July. It really would take, if we're doing just one day a week, it's going to be about $6,000 we need. So that, I mean, that's not, when you, when you're talking about the budget breakers, it's certainly not a budget breaker.
No, but was that $2,000 all in for the two days a week? I'm just trying to understand.
No, that's only, again, one, $2,000 for this year plus another six for, for, so, because the the pool program splits our fiscal years. So so we need $2,000 to get us through June, another $6,000 for July and August.
But that's in the next budget.
Yeah, so, and so we're talking now about, I have $2,000 already to spend. If we don't get going until the last day of June, we've got money to get us into July. If you want to do it, and that's one day a week, probably, you know, three hours, and prob, and it's about $500 per day for us to do payroll and and expenses. So it all depends on how many days we do.
Yeah, but but one other thing that we're not able to do this, or I don't think we're going to be able to do, is the concert series too. So just to take that into effect too, that this is something else that they could do with their family, hopefully.
And I do have $4,000 set aside for that. So we could redirect that if you want.
So can we use the $2,000, roll it over if we don't swim in June? Is it, is that taboo?
No, I mean, if that's what we want to do, I, it's really, if there's, if money is left over at the end of the year, the policy is that the excess revenue is allocated to future capital projects. The council can do it at whatever they decide. If they'd like to redirect some of it, that's fine. I'm thinking, even if we don't spend the $2,000 this year, we always come out just fine. And we can, we can budget the $6,000. That would be plenty. Again, if if the people say we'd support twice a week, and the Dolphins say they'll do twice a week, because again, they may not have, though we're talking about teenagers here, you know, running lifeguards. We had to have 12 lifeguards to fill like four positions last time. But if they, if they do it, and they are, I, when I talked to Bethany Black, she said, the more days we can do, the more willing they are to help. So if we had, you know, more evenings or afternoon, Saturday, Sunday afternoons, I think they're talking about, because they have, we we have to work around swim meets, things like that.
Right.
The more we have, the more we could do, and again, it's just a matter of what we want to spend.
Yeah, I have concerns about betting on June being opened up for swimming, but it would be awesome if we could, you know, do twice a week in July and August and.
It's really until school opens. So if we open August, in the middle of August, we only have the first couple of weeks. The, the July is the meetup. So.
Okay.
That really is. We, it seems like last time, we didn't even get started until the middle of June. So we might, you know, $6,000, probably enough to do whatever, whatever's available. Again, I'd like to hear back from Bethany to see what her feel is, because she's probably more up on what's actually going to happen with the pool. No, that chlorine should be safe anyway, right?
All right. Any other questions? Yeah, so open up for public comment, please.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Roger, for your presentation.
I think, I think we need to get, you need direction from council on the $6,000.
Yeah.
Be specific. I mean, just need to be a motion.
We don't need to, we don't, I need, yeah, I need direction so that I can build it into the budget for June. If you want to say, if if you want me to go for whatever, you know, if it was your consensus that you want to do up to two days a week, if that's what Bethany says is going to be possible, I can build that into the budget. Or if you want to say one day a week, I mean.
Is there something, can we build it in the budget, but then if the survey says different, we, we're covered?
Because we're talking about adopting the budget in June anyway. So whatever the survey says, if the ser, take the survey, compare it to what Bethany says, and see what we can do. I'll project out the costs and bring back a whatever program the the people ask for. Then if you don't like it, we can always cut it in June.
Well, I'd like to see two days a week built into the budget, if that's possible. I mean, if people are for it, I'm sure they would, would not want to limit themselves to, and like you said, Roger, we have to work around the schools' swim meets and everything.
We were talking about an afternoon and an evening, because there's a lot of people who work all day. They'd like to come use the pool in the evening.
Yeah.
Rather than just drop their kids off in the afternoon. So again, I'll, if you want to, if you want to more involved report on this, we can make it an agenda item in in next month, and I could tell you all the information I get.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, sounds good.
So we'll put the survey together, send that out, bring you back the responses for the May meeting, see where all that lands, and then basically ask Roger to, at least at this point, build two days into the budget and then see, see where it ends up.
Is it possible to also send it to the superintendent of the school to send out through his?
Yeah, it'll just be a link, so he.
Yeah, but if we ask him to do that, I'm sure he'd do that, and then we would maybe hit the.
The only thing about that is that the superintendent's going to send it to all their resident or all their students, and some of the students don't live in town, right? They live in Rockland. And so it's not like we're at the, at the front gate checking people's IDs before they come in, but we also don't want to have the program be inundated by, you know, folks who aren't part of the town either. I don't know if he can parse that out. I'll check and see. If he could parse it out and have it sent to only people with a certain zip code, maybe here. I don't know. I'll, I'll talk to him about it and see what we can do.
Okay, I think we have someone from the public.
Yeah, Mayor Duncan, if I may, during that last conversation, several people raised their hand and put them down. So if I could just reach back out to attendees to see if they would like to speak.
Yes, please.
At this time.
Open up for public comment.
Okay, public comment open again for those of you who raised and lowered and raised and lowered. Another opportunity. Miguel, go ahead. Unmute.
Okay, thank you. A couple of comments. First of all, need to check the agreement with the high school. Roger's been using, I think, the full cost for the operation. If you'll read it, it says we don't have to pay 20% of the cost. So that'll reduce the cost. And I'd like to see three days a week. One of the things, if you want to have guards that are happy, they need to work a little bit. So if the pool was open like from 1:00 to 4:00, 12 to 4:00, three days a week, when we had it before, there were a couple of days where it was really crowded. And and really crowded is like 100 people when I was there. So I don't know. I know one was a birthday party that our town clerk had there, so there was a lot of people. But I, you know, as was stated, the community contributed a lot of money for that swimming pool. And it doesn't cost all that much to operate it for six weeks in the summer. So I'd like to see the, maybe Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Sunday, the guards would like, probably like to be off. So I don't know if guards would want to work on Sunday. But three days a week, if they work four, five hours, that'd be 15 hours. It'd give them a little bit of money. Two days a week doesn't give them very much. Also, the need for the community. So I'd like to see that, and also get the correct cost for the operation of the pool. Thank you.
Thanks, Miguel. Do we have anyone else?
Anybody else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. And I guess this time you're off the hook now, Roger. Thanks for the presentation. Okay, so now we're at council committee reports. Anyone have any reports from the committees to sit on?
I don't this time. I will next time.
Okay. Jenny?
No, my economic development meeting is Thursday, so I will have one next time. I did attend the GSEC webinar on the economic development in the region, and it was kind of interesting to hear their their point, but there really wasn't nothing to bring back to you guys, so. And then we had the leadership class on education, and I thought that was a very well presentation, and it was neat to see them connect together. Some of the different education leaders were actually connecting on, in our leadership class. Anyway.
Well, that's good.
That's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Jenny. And I have a Pioneer meeting on Thursday as well at 3:00 PM, and we're still doing Zoom. So if anyone's interested in Pioneer Energy and the ongoing expansion into El Dorado County, tune in, 3:00 PM on Zoom, Thursday. And it looks like it's it for now. So a meeting is adjourned at 8:17.